On the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items, so if anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but council will not respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at one whole minute.
Good. Mayor? Good morning. Actually, I say, "Viva Las Vegas." City Council and everybody, I'm Alan Karcher. I'm a native-born Las Vagan, and I'm a graduate of Las Vegas High School in 1968. I'm going to ask you all a question. Have you seen your history lately? Well, hopefully, you got one of these, and if you don't, I'd like to hand these to you. But on October 17th, we're going to have a function at the Las Vegas High School Theater Performing Arts. The speaker for the history will be Senator Richard Bryan. He's going to be talking about our history of the school. We're going to have Scott Walker speak about the future of that school. We're going to have about three, four performances of the Academy of the Arts, which is impressive. We're also going to have Dean Dan Hamilton from the Boyd School of Law speak about how great Boyd gaming and Bill Boyd has been to help start the law found, the law school at UNLV. So this is a function for the city, and I'm going to quote Oscar Goodman. Remember, he said, "If the core of the apple rots, then the city rots." Well, we need to keep this school beautiful. We need to keep it there and also enhance the school. And half the funds go to the scholarships of the needy kids in Art City. So hopefully, you all have got one of these. I know you've seen it. Have you seen your history lately? So this is going to be a big function. I'll come back the first of October and talk again, but I hope that all the city leaders will be here because this school just isn't a high school or the Academy of the Arts. It graduated governors, United States Senators, United States Congress people. You know, Lloyd George is a graduate and one of the biggest of these.
Mr. Carter, you're over your minute, but more importantly, two things. What time and at, in the auditorium or the gymnasium there?
It's going to be at the Theater Performing Arts, October 17th, 5:30. We're going to have a little cocktail reception, if you want to hand these out, and I don't know how many you need. And we're going to show the campus. They're going to show the new campus inside the Theater Performing Arts, and we're going to present a beautiful Roy, original Roy Purcell, an honor of Bill Boyd that'll hang in the main foyer of the building. So I think all the city, I gave the same speech yesterday to the county and the water authority. I think it's time for everybody to realize this is your history.
And where do they see it online? Where do they see all the information online?
Yeah, it's all here, and you'll be getting another letter RSVP@lasvegashighschoolhistory2019@gmail.com. It's all here. But I just want to let you know, this is a great campus, and if we keep it beautified and take care of the kids, we're all going to benefit from it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, for those of you who are watching, LVHShistory2019@gmail.com. And if you want to send in contributions, it's to help preserve the historic building as well as...
Scholarships for the needy kids at Las Vegas High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
That's good. Come see your history.
Okay, anyone else?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Russell Irvin. I'm a 23-year resident of Ward Three. I live in the Hunt Ridge District. I'm here to beg the approval of speed cushions to be installed, which is your item, agenda number 24, for between 15th Street and Maryland Parkway on Franklin Avenue. It's kind of turned into a Speedway and a very dangerous area. After a couple of years of a lot of my neighbors also trying to do the best they can to request help with signatures and everything, it's finally reached this point, and we really urged the approval, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, and please make an appointment with Councilwoman Diaz because she is most concerned about everything, not selective items, everything in her district, her ward, and so do you want to respond even though we're not in dialogue, but I think that's a safety issue for sure.
No, for sure, especially very concerned when we're talking about kids' safety coming to and from school, and also our seniors might be taking strolls and then making sure the cars are being mindful. And when they aren't mindful, then we need to make sure that we create the environment by which they slow down and they really watch out for everybody on the street, and their pets, too. Sometimes their pets are out there. So with that, no, that we're very supportive of any mechanism that's increasing the safety in our neighborhoods.
And we are missing a lot of sidewalks down Franklin Avenue on both sides.
Would you make an appointment, call into Councilwoman Diaz's office, make an appointment, and share with her your information?
I will. Thank you for the time.
Phone number, your phone number to your office?
You know, I don't have it memorized yet, Mayor.
Okay.
6405, and then they'll transfer you over to us.
6405.
Okay.
702-229-6405.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much. Anyone else? Hi there.
Good morning. My name is Erica Martinez. I am the president of Hunt Ridge Neighborhood, and I am actually speaking about number 24 as well. I am here on behalf of the other neighbors that weren't able to be here today and just asking the council people here to go ahead and approve number 24, and as Russell mentioned, the safety of the children, the pets, citizens, and anyone who walks down that street. I, as a mother of two small children, worry about that. As you mentioned, we have been in communication as the board of Hunt Ridge and the surrounding neighborhoods have been in contact with Councilwoman Diaz, so we have a great relationship going, which I'm pretty excited, and we'll continue with that, but just want to voice my concerns and ask you guys to approve that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down this morning. Anyone else? With that, then, we will move on to Agenda Item 7. For possible action, any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The following items have been requested to be held and obeyed, table withdrawn or stricken. Item 29, a report by our fabulous city manager, Scott D. Adams, on emerging issues is stricken by request of the staff. Item 33, bill number 2019-26, AKA nightclub bill, requested by staff to be obeyed to September 18th, 2019. And that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote. We are able to vote, and please post on those motions. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda. Before we move on, I'd like to make a quick announcement about our next city council meeting. This is a reminder for everyone. It's scheduled for September 18th, that the council will have a very unique start time at 10:00 AM, not at 9:00 AM. So mark your calendars if you have business to attend to in front of city council. Start time, September 18th, Wednesday, will be at 10:00, not at 9:00. And we want to make sure everyone's aware, so remember that, please. Then we will now move on to Items Number 8 through 27 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and should be enacted or may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my abstention on items number 12 through 15 because they pertain to medical marijuana issues and one of my sons involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Councilwoman Seaman, I understand that you wish to make the comment for the record on number 8 before I call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to comment on item number 8 on the agenda. This is only my fifth meeting on the council, yet it is the third time we are being asked for an additional $100,000 for Badlands lawsuit defense with what seems like no end in sight. While I vote to approve it, it underscores the need to resolve the issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 8 through 27.
Thank you. There's a motion. I forgot to ask you, any of you, if you wanted anything brought forward? Okay, thank you. Please vote and please post. Those motions carry. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 28. Administrative. A report from Stavon Corbett, External Relations Manager, Workforce Connections Regarding Various Workforce Development Initiatives and Investment Cycles Related to the City of Las Vegas.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council, Lisa Morris Hibler, Chief Community Services Officer. And this morning, we are going to have a presentation by Workforce Connections. By way of background, Workforce Connections is Southern Nevada's local workforce development board and is responsible for the operations of the one-stop delivery system that includes Southern Nevada counties of Clark, Nye, Lincoln, and Esmeralda. The city and the counties have fiduciary responsibility as set forth by the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Workforce Connections works with employers and the community to connect job seekers to education, job training, and employment opportunities. Joining us this morning is Irene Bustamante Adams, the Deputy Director of Workforce Connections, who will give an update on current workforce development strategic initiatives and investment cycles related to the city of Las Vegas, and special guest, Dr. Ronald Hezen, Executive Director of the Library District.
Wonderful. Thank you, and welcome. And even though Dr. Hibler announced your names, would you repeat it and your affiliation again for our record? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, for the record, Irene Bustamanta Adams, Chief Strategy Officer and Deputy Director for Workforce Connections. And to my left here is Dr. Ron Hezen, Executive Director of the Las Vegas City Clark County Library District.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I do want to say that our Executive Director, Hyman Cruz, does send his regrets. Under his leadership, our organization has flourished significantly, so we were asked to present some of our best practices around the U.S., and so currently, he is in California at the Workforce Association Conference. So he graciously is doing his panels and the panels that I was going to serve on so that I could stay here because our oldest daughter in my family is expecting her first child any day now, any moment, and so I get to stay close to home. So I'm going to progress to slide number three for me. So today, I want to give you a brief overview of Workforce Connections roles, give you an update of the 2019 investment cycle, and why that's important to your city strategic plan, and also what we're working on next. So as Dr. Hibler mentioned, we are the Workforce Connections, we're the local workforce board. We connect employers to a ready workforce through a network of one-stop career centers. In the picture here is the flagship career center located on Charleston and Torrey Pines, and our focus at the centers is to provide education, training, and employment opportunities to citizens here in Southern Nevada. We are also responsible for convening the one-stop system. We are one of 17 members within this public workforce system. Our bucket is about 20 million. What is important to remember here is that we are a system within the Valley. In this slide, it shows you the funding streams. What's important to remember here for you is that there are different funding streams for the 17 partners. Our bucket of money comes from the Department of Labor on the federal level, but the other partners also get their funds from the Department of Education, the Department of Health and Human Services, or direct grants like the Second Chance Act Grant.
And any state money?
Not for bucket number one. There is not. The Department of Health does have the Community Service Block Grant that does come from their allocation, but not at Title I. We would like to see that in the future moving forward, so we are building our strategy in order to be able to ask for that. What's important to remember here is that in totality, the amount of money that is available for the state of Nevada collectively is between 140 million to 190 million, and that requires a lot of coordination. In some states, they are mandated to work together, such like in Florida or Texas here. That is not the case. And so it has to be a willingness to collaborate and to serve the people together. These are some of our partners within the workforce system, and we partner with local, state agencies, the Nevada System of Higher Ed, K-12 Economic Development Authorities, and other library districts. Again, the key word, Madam Mayor and council members, is that it is a system, and our goal together is to leverage the resources in order to bring the highest level of service to the community. Our program year for 2019, Title I funds, those are from the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, began on July 1st, 2019. And like your citywide strategic planning process, we started way in advance to ensure stakeholder input. We convened the system stakeholders, which include members from higher ed, K-12, also the chambers of commerce and economic development authorities, just to name a few. Their recommendations for priorities went to our board and then to our Leo Consortium, which is the local elected officials, for approval, and those priorities then were put into our request for proposals. Out of those priorities, six things surfaced. One, continuing the transition of WEOWA Title I services to the one-stop centers. Maximizing and leveraging our partners' resources with effective referrals, co-enrollment, and partnerships. Focus on alternative labor pools. And here's what's important is because we all know that at the state level, the unemployment rate is close to 4%. So technically, you would consider that virtual full employment, but we all know that's not the case. And so alternative labor pools of Southern Nevadans is important, so we are looking at the underemployed, the reentry, disengaged youth, veterans, and individuals with disability. The fourth point was to focus on our targeted industry sectors and in-demand occupations, including apprenticeships and other work-based learning models. And the fifth, seeking the highest return on investment for the public funds, and then last, but not least, utilizing performance data to measure the ROI and make strategic decisions. This all went into a competitive procurement process. At the federal level, we're required to procure every four years. So this last year, we did a robust outreach campaign, which attracted over 100 entities that were interested in competing for the bucket of money. With that, 39 proposals actually turned in and submitted interest for that money. Out of those 39, they went to an independent third-party evaluator and passed the technical review phase. Then our board chair compromised an ad hoc selection committee, which is made up of Workforce Connection Board members and WEOWA system partners. They then made recommendations to the full board and to our local elected consortium, and they all, they ended up funding 16 million of those dollars to Title I providers on May 9th, 2019. To highlight this investment in the community, we launched what we call our Community Investment Tour. We have been stopping at various one-stop career centers, such as the West Las Vegas Library, to let the community know about the no-cost education, training, and employment opportunities that exist. That is why we're here in front of you today. So where are we now? We now have more system partners engaged within the one-stop career centers. This is important because the residents do not have to travel for it in order to get their services. Their services are available right in their community. More integrated and collaborative partnerships, that includes, for example, like the Department of Health put the childcare services available within those one-stop centers. And then lastly, more access points for the services available, and that couldn't be done without our partnership with the library. We'll share that. Dr. Hezen will share about that in a second. On this map, you can see the outreach that is expanding. We have 10 sites within the libraries. We also have additional partnerships with the Department of Employment and Training, the Department of Welfare Services, and also at CSN. And this is an interesting fact. We did an analysis, and more than half of those eligible for those services are now closer to a one-stop career center because of the expansion. When you help one person reach a sustainable wage, you are impacting generations. This March, we were at the one-stop career center at the Clark County Library to celebrate a milestone. As of March, throughout the one-stop career centers located within the libraries, more than 1,000 people have been enrolled in our system and now have access to the critical employment assistance and job training services that they may not have access to before. We are expanding our footprint, so thank you to your team members, Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Fiore, and Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler. We are aligning our strategies to partner with the city of Las Vegas Works. We have been able to serve hundreds of individuals looking for employment at your World Market Center and also at the new municipal court developments that you have brought forth. We are not only partnering on the hiring events, but you can see there that we are also offering resources like interviewing techniques and resume reviews for your constituents in order to make sure that they come the best prepared and are insured success. We also have plans to serve constituents in Ward Three. Councilwoman Diaz is seen here as one of our clients we served, Mac Williams. He had, was looking for a job and was able to get placement. She is, Councilwoman Diaz is partnering with the Latin Chamber and will host a great job and career match on October 5th at the East Las Vegas Library. Despite the low state unemployment, we all know that there are several pockets of ZIP codes that still struggle with double-digit unemployment, so our goal is to help her solve the issue in her ward. We serve Nevadans all over the valley. Here's a gentleman like Sean, who was a freelancer but was looking for full-time work, and we were able to help him land that position. Also, the lady to the right, my right, a young adult named Brittany, who is a young single mom and is now receiving training to achieve her dream of becoming a nurse. The takeaway here is that we are a community resource for the, your citizens within the city. What are we working on next? Thanks to Dr. Hibler, we started the conversation in placing a one-stop career center within the historic West Side School. This aligns with your citywide strategic vision for a workforce development and training center to serve the urban core that the city manager shared about last month. We are also exploring partnerships with the Clark County School District Adult Education School on St. Louis. The president of the CSN Community College, Dr. Saragosa, invited us to be part of the three student unions on his campus to place the career, career one-stop centers there. And then lastly, some additional Las Vegas-Clark County sites, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hezen to share about that.
Thank you so much. As you know, we just opened our new, our West Las, East Las Vegas Library, and thank you to Councilwoman Coffin and Councilwoman Diaz and all of you, because without you, it would not have been possible. But that is the very first library in the country to have been designed to house a one-stop center. Now, the first one-stop that was outside of the original one-stop center was in our library in Mesquite. The second one was in Laughlin. And we have been going around the country telling our colleagues in libraries how important it is for us to collaborate. You know, as Ben Franklin said, I'll throw this in, this is just off the cuff, "If we don't hang together, most assuredly, we shall all hang separately." So I think that was a pretty fair look, and we see the power of collaboration when we look at Three Square. Three Square started out as how many different food banks? Mayor, you probably know the answer.
Absolutely.
There were tons of them.
Yep.
And when they all came together and collaborated as Three Square, the power was increased to the 10th degree. I mean, it is so powerful, it's so wonderful. Well, as we move forward, we are going to be opening additional one-stop centers at our West Charleston Library and our Sahara West Library. So, and eventually, our building services plan says that we'll have them in every urban library, but we have to take it one step at a time as we can afford it. Now, the thing that's good about this partnership is that then the tax dollars that are going to help people find their jobs can actually focus on that, not on rent, not on utilities. So all of their skills and abilities. Now, libraries have been helping people get jobs for over 100 years. As a matter of fact, when I first started here, I was at the Denny's on South Las Vegas Boulevard, and the cashier was late at night, and I'd been out at libraries, and she came out and she saw my badge, which always is hanging the wrong way, so my picture doesn't show. I don't want to scare people away. And so anyway, she's looking, "You work for the library?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am." And she said, "Oh, I can't believe it. During the recession, we lost everything we had. And because of the library, we were able to get jobs, and we lost our house, and now we're looking at buying a new house." And I said, "So is this your main job?" She said, "No, this is my second job. We have to have two jobs so we can get out of the hole." So, but we don't have the time to spend on resumes and education that the experts at one-stop have. So this way, they can focus on all, where their expertise is, and meanwhile, we can be there to provide the venue.
Beautiful, just beautiful.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes our presentation. We just, once again, we want to thank you for assigning Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Fiore, to serve on our board during her first term. She was instrumental in helping us set the strategic direction and also strengthening our board, so we are indebted to her. But we are equally excited that you assigned Councilwoman Olivia Diaz to be assigned to Workforce Connections, and we look forward to her contributions. And lastly, but not least, the valuable input and leadership that Dr. Morris Hibler has provided for Workforce is invaluable. Because of her, we are able to align with your city strategic direction and make sure that we are able to serve your citizens. So with that, thank you for allowing us to present, and we are open to any questions.
Thank you so much. I think the report was just beautiful, and to speak about Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman Diaz, everything's about the individual and their integrity and their commitment to follow through on what they've been asked to do or elected to do or hired to do. And so knowing that both the ladies about whom you spoke, they serve with love and passion and attachment to this community and to making lives better for everybody. So we, it's the leadership that, and fit, that makes a difference for everybody to be able to be effective in what they choose to do. So we thank you for that. I'm very proud of Mayor Pro Tem and so excited that Councilwoman Diaz has been elected to serve Ward Three. She's an incredible woman and a teacher, and so devoted to the excitement of opportunities that are available through the Workforce Connection. And none of us have any sense of anything if you don't have a feeling of self-worth, and the job happens to do that for so many of us. So thank you, and I will open the floor to comments, questions. Councilmen, please.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys for coming. It was great to see you. Ron, always, and Ms. Bustamante Adams, it's a pleasure to see you as well. Thank you, and thank you for all your support that we're doing. I know in Ward Five, especially with our workforce center that's happening, that is a real deal, and we are moving forward with it, and we're going to see a lot of progress happening this year and first part of next year. We should, we should see some buildings going up and some things happening, which is going to make a tremendous impact in our community. So thank you guys very much. You know, our goal is real simple, 15% unemployment, we're trying to get that down, and with your help, we're going to do that. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I just want to take the time to thank you all as well for being instrumental in carrying out this kind of work, connecting resources to the community and making sure that if they are employed and they're not necessarily making the best salary, that then they look ahead and they also get the training they need so they can get ahead and they can help support their families. It's so, sometimes we get so caught in the here and the now, but you're providing that bridge to... bridge to get them to a better place. So thank you so much for that, and I'm looking forward to our great career and job match coming up here October 5th. And I wanted to know, are there any updates as to the work that we're still doing out of the East Las Vegas Library? Do we have, is it still going strong?
Absolutely. So we launched in July, and we are putting things in place, but they are, out of all the centers that we have, they are the center that are seeing the most people come in, I think because there was such a gap of services there before. So not only are they excited about the library, but also the patrons are taking advantage of the opportunity. So on our list preliminary, they are the ones that are seeing the most people every day at the Career Center.
Wonderful, let's keep it that way. Thank you so much, Dr. Hees.
Thank you.
Please, Mayor Protam.
Madam Mayor, so it was my absolute pleasure to serve with you once again, Mrs. Bustamante. And I have to say, you do an amazing job with the libraries, and your executive director, Chaimy Cruz, is just exactly what Workforce needed, and you two together are just doing so many incredible things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the report, thank you for everything you do. Are you in all the community centers? I know it's just money.
Actually, we are embarking on our first one, which is, we're having conversations with the Whitney Community Center. Part of it is them wanting us to be there, but, so we had an introduction from an elected official, and that's what helps.
Well, to me, I know our council and certainly with the West Las Vegas Historic School, that's one, but I do think the community centers, and even if you're only there one day a week, certain hours, so you can keep moving through community centers, it really would be helpful. And then the, the other thing is the follow-up, that each individual that is successfully placed, that they're, and again, this is just about having enough personnel, and it always turns back to being able to afford it. But that contact, that follow-up, is it going well? When somebody is placed in a job, they're always nervous wrecked, and that you have, are able to afford that contact, that follow-up for a week or two, and then have the data, the data to show it.
Yes, absolutely. Because we encourage the individuals, some individuals take their first step getting into employment, it's sometimes not an easy task to remove all their barriers, but we also encourage them to continue to have that dialogue with us in order to upscale their skillset. So entry level sometimes is their first start, and then the follow-up continuing with us so that they can be on a journey of progression.
And could I ask you to go ahead through Dr. Jarra, but maybe a communication, some type of letter from you and, and the board to the schools, to the high schools, to the counselors there, that your service is available at these locations for students who are seeking, because those deans are so busy and doing so much in the discipline area, for them to get past even college placement, union apprenticeship programs and all of that, it's just not there. But it's another resource, they could duplicate the letter and put it in each packet or put it up on their website.
Thank you for that idea, and you'll be very proud of us today. My colleagues are presenting in front of the school counselors this morning, and so that was the, that's the first time we have been invited to come in and share about the resources that we have. And so we are looking forward to that relationship, and like I said, today is a monumental day, not only sharing with you and how we get to serve your constituents, but in addition, the school counselors are such a critical piece, and we have started building that relationship. So yes, thank you, and I like the letter idea, and we'll carry that out.
And if I might suggest just a follow-up, but just put it on your tickler file every year, because we all know as we get new members involved and times change, and I look at the Las Vegas Visitors and Convention Authority that has totally, a total new staff, they need to be brought up to speed, and it's just something regular on a, on a continuing calendar, make sure that we do this again. So we thank you for your service. You've been incredible to the state and to our community, and we thank you, and certainly Dr. Always, it's such a pleasure to see you.
Thank you.
Know your passion for our libraries and for the young people and others who, even the older people, who enjoy our libraries and how much fun it's been.
To me, they're all young.
How many years you been with us now?
Five years, as of yesterday.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, and I'd just like to say I love your last point as well. Later this year, in October, we will be debuting with the Las Vegas Global Alliance our Workforce Blueprint 2.0, which will give you the industries from the southern region that are emerging or are already superstars, and also the in-demand occupations with other additional information. And we're going to be taking that road show throughout the valley, and the Convention Authority would be a great location, so thank you for that suggestion. It's a pleasure.
Right. And Councilman Knutson is the representative for the city, back up with Scott Adams and myself for LVGE. So what is the date of your presentation, which meeting?
October 3rd. I just got a, I just got a call yesterday, so it might be premature, but Mr. Jonas Peterson asked if they could have their board meeting at our location, and one, to ratify and for your board, the LVGA board, to approve the Workforce Blueprint 2.0, and then also to highlight the partnership between the two entities, which is, again, a monumental shift from what we had before.
Wonderful. Well, Councilman Knutson was elected to his representation on that, so hopefully he'll follow up. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to, we've stricken number 29, we're on to Agenda Item 30, a report from Greg Whitzel, Director of Parks and Recreation on Activities Programs, Park Projects and Improvements, all wards. And we're so excited he's with us. What a fine, fine background, reputation, caring heart and soul. We welcome you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Greg Whitzel, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Las Vegas. I am very excited about the future, and I've been here two months, and I can tell you firsthand, after meeting with all of you, as well as this great team of professionals and this chief and city manager, that they live the core values every day of being kind, committed, and smart, and it's truly my privilege and honor to be your new director. So I have a brief presentation from the Good News Department, Parks and Recreation, today. First, what we're going to talk about, briefly review our mission statement, our department overview, and then talk about some of the bonds and capital improvement projects that we have coming forward. When you look at this mission statement, it's pretty long, but let's break out a few of what's most important here, providing programs and services to our community to improve the quality of life. And how we do that is through community services and sustainable neighborhoods. And may I add that beyond sustainable neighborhoods is connecting our neighborhoods. It's the one place, the parks, is a place where people can go, regardless of how much money you have or the color of your skin, that we can all come together as a community. And that's why I'm so proud to be your director. Let's talk about that connection. In the survey that was completed just a year, a couple of years ago, 61% of residents indicated they used or visited a park in the last 12 months. That means that parks are the most common connection that residents have with the city, outranking the city's website, cultural programs, and emergency services. It's pretty profound when you think about it. We have an opportunity through our Parks and Recreation System to make a connection with our community like no other. So what do we have out there? 139 different sports fields, 81 parks, we'll have 84 by the end of business, I'm going to talk about some of those new parks here coming up, 61 miles of trails that are part of an interconnected trail network of over 400 miles of trails in the valley, six community rec centers, five active and adult senior centers, four city-owned golf courses, four city leased facilities that include some of our partners, Big League Dreams, the Centennial Hills Community Center, the Durango Hills Community Center, and the Las Vegas Sports Park and Facility. Our four city-owned golf courses are, of course, Muni, Desert Pines, Durango, and Angel Park. We have six aquatic facilities, two sports complexes. Too forward here, I need to go back. And this is what I thought was really profound, when we started adding up the numbers, last fiscal year, 5.4 million users at our parks. That includes tournaments, special events, 1.3 million facility attendance, and over 619,000 residents served through our programs, specifically 42,988 youth. We want to thank the mayor and the mayor's fund, especially Dr. Lisa Hibler and her team. Last year, we had 171 youth who participated in our sports programs free of charge, thanks to the mayor's fund, and we hope to make that 1,000 youth next year. That's one of our goals. So let's break out some of these bonds and capital improvement projects. First, in 2015, the city council approved 54 million in recreation bond funds, and since that time, we've completed about $10.8 million in projects. Others are in construction or in the design phase. Here they are, the upcoming ones in the next, you know, six months or longer that will be done. And I, first I want to back up and say that this is a team effort. Not one department handles all these projects. We have Public Works and our fine director, Jensen, we have O and M and Director Walker, as well as the finance team, and of course, our Parks and Rec team, all working together to create these great projects for our community. First, on Ward One, upcoming is Wolfter Park, our new dog park with three dog park areas, three shade pavilions, lighting, play equipment, benches, and drinking fountains. We hope to complete that by the fourth quarter of 2019, and it's a $1.9 million project. Next is Bill Brier Park in Ward One. This is a new outdoor fitness court that we're doing in cooperation with the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign will help provide assistance in class development, helping with marketing and social media campaigns, as well as providing promotional materials, and an overall fitness program for the residents of Las Vegas. We're really excited about this and hope to cut a ribbon in December of 2019.
Excuse me, could I ask on that particular one, what is the funding of a unit like that, and wouldn't that be something wonderful to put in pocket parts around the community, especially where the population's more intense? Because we've been talking over the years about these pocket parks and how they revitalize a neighborhood, and if that cost and the size of the property merits it, wouldn't that be a good place to go?
Thank you, Mayor, that's a great question. The cost is $80,000, and it's partly a reduced cost because the National Fitness Campaign also contributes funding towards its development. We'll actually have the 100th, 100th fitness courts in the country installed here. So it is a great opportunity, I believe, to expand this program further out into our city and in pocket parks and areas like you mentioned.
Is there, could there be, and I think I have to defer over to Mr. Savantes, for naming rights, that somebody could contribute if it's 80,000, could make a nice donation to the city and to Parks and Rec by putting one of these in a pocket park, double whatever?
For the record, Jose Savantes, Mayor, yes, there is that opportunity there, and I have asked Director Whitzel to kind of identify those opportunities at other parks. This is the first one that we're pioneering, and so I asked him, based on this, let's see what other opportunities are, because you're right, it's one of those where it's not an expensive improvement, but one that could really be utilized by a lot of folks, whether senior folks just want to get out there and do a little bit of exercise stretching, or kids, it's a great opportunity, I think, to provide this to a lot of different parts of our community, and the director's looking for different sites where we could implement this.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I might also add that with this fitness court comes an app, there's an app with this, and as there are many apps, but as you've seen in some of our parks, back in the 80s and 90s, it was very common to put these fitness stations in, and then they don't get much use. So what we want to do is develop a program around this, whether it be a youth or adult or senior program, where you can sign up, and maybe we have partners from the medical district that assist us with this type of project, but that's where we see the, the future being, is a developed program around a facility, and we think will get a lot more use. Thank you for those questions. Next is Veterans Memorial Community Center in Ward Two. Its estimated completion is the first quarter of 2020, and it will include LED lighting, a dance room, a classroom, weight room, and improved hallways. That's a $150,000 project. We also have some improvements happening at Pavilion Center Pool in Ward Two. We're replastering the pool, the deck drains, and the concrete decking, which is definitely in need of repair. We also have some other improvements that we're looking at. Councilwoman Seaman and myself were on a tour last week, and we're excited about some other opportunities and exploring them in the future for this Pavilion Pool Center as well.
And Mr. Whitzel, is that, is that pool leased out to schools for teams, public, the public schools charter school?
Yes, Palo Verde actually uses that school, uses that pool, as well as we have a private swim team that, that's housed out of there as well. The largest swim team in, in the valley works out in this facility.
Wow.
It's a very popular, very heavily used pool. Our, our most popular and heavily used pool is in Councilwoman Seaman's Ward. And also Ward Three, this is probably the project that I'm most excited about, it's Baker Pool and Park. It's to be completed here in the next couple of months. Councilwoman Diaz and I got to tour this two weeks ago, and I'm sure she agrees with me, very, very exciting project. What we're doing here is some new synthetic turf soccer fields, and it's a new type of synthetic turf. It's called EcoTherm, and it's meant to be a cooler playing surface. The overall budget for this project's $8.8 million, and I think it will be, when it's done, one of the best parks in the city, including a water play area, probably one of the biggest splash pad or play area for multiple ages, from kindergarten through 12 years old, will also be done at this. It's got a soccer theme, so you see that soccer ball and the pitcher, that will be lit interiorly with a LED lighting, so at night, it'll be awesome. We're really excited about this park, and we're looking to cut the ribbon in the fourth quarter of 2019, so really close here in the next couple of months. Are there any questions about, about this park? Look forward to seeing you all there. Very exciting park project, and just looks great, and coming along very well. Harris Marion Park in Ward Three, this has a couple of different elements, an equestrian element on one end, as well as two small soccer fields on the other. This is a new park, it says, it designs at 40%, and its completion is scheduled for the fourth quarter of 2020. The Las Vegas Wash Park, this is a recreation bond project with estimated completion in this fourth quarter, it's under construction right now. It's artificial turf, soccer field, a basketball court, picnic pavilions, and a really neat new playground. And this playground is one of those, the rope-type structures that are exciting, and, and kids I think will really enjoy this new type of playground. In Ward Four, we have Dragona Hills Park, this is also a new park with estimated completion in the first quarter of 2020. It has walking paths surrounding it, there's going to be a new playground unit, and what we're really looking forward to is these two staging areas that we're setting up for the public to enjoy the beauty of the surrounding area, but also we can do movies in the park here or enjoy a special event. That's a $7.8 million project. Charlton, Charleston Heights Park and Center in Ward Five, Councilman Creer, you can see his hands going up, we're really looking, we're working very, very, very hard with Councilman Creer on this project. The vision here is something unlike anything else done in the entire country, and that is a tech center, esports, rec-type facility in a neighborhood park. There is, there is so many opportunities. I know the councilman and I were having lunch last week, and we were excited about all the different ways that we can bring technology into this park in a neighborhood-type setting. So it's still in the design phase, but we are estimating completion in the second quarter of 2021 or earlier, hopefully, Councilman, we're working hard. We anticipate that to be approximately a $5.7 million project. We're working closely with esports professionals around the country to bring the best ideas into this park, and I think it's going to be a huge success when it's done. One of the things that has, we're currently working on is community workshops in the neighborhood with the councilmen to get some public feedback on our ideas. Also in Ward Five, the Las Vegas Senior Center, I got to tour this two weeks ago. This is just going to be a fabulous new renovation to this facility, new flooring, cabinets, windows, restrooms, making the facility completely ADA compliant. windows, restrooms, making the facility completely ADA compliant. And this will be completed in the first quarter of 2020 or earlier, considering how fast that project's moving along. Overall, it's a $2.9 million renovation. Now moving on to Ward 6, and Mayor Protam's Ward, is Floyd Lamb Park and the Hay Barn, which we are working very diligently on this project, to convert this into a reception-type hall or special event facility. This is just a beautiful area, and we know it will be a well-used attraction when it's done. And we want to thank Mayor Protam for all her help in making this a reality. We know we've got a lot of work to do on structural repairs, some fire code upgrades, ADA compliance, but also we know that this will just be a well-used facility when it's done. Also at Floyd Lamb is mountain bike trails, and we're working with a group called Gravity Logic, who is one of the national experts in developing a pump track. It'll be the first one in the city. It's budgeted about $425,000. But also, there'll be trails developed around this park. I think that will be a very well-used when it's completed. Also in Ward 6-
Excuse me, if I may, what's a pump track?
A pump track is a mountain bike facility. It's a smaller, what they do is create, basically create mounds of dirt that you go up and down, and you use gravity to get you moving, and you can jump, and it's just a lot of fun for all ages. It's a smaller track that's built into the larger trail system.
Wow, thank you.
Teton Trails Park, we cut a ribbon on, or broke ground on this park in my first week on the job, and it was just really a great, great groundbreaking, mostly because this is going to be dedicated to Jeremy Mitchell Huber, a wonderful family we got to meet. He was a local avid lacrosse player who passed away unexpectedly. And this $1.8 million project is being funded through the general fund and also municipal sports unit funding. And this is scheduled to be completed in the first quarter of 2020 before January 26th. Mayor Protam, it will be ready, and we will cut a ribbon, and we're really excited about this project.
And we have female markers. Don't forget about that.
Yes. Thank you. And then lastly, is, coming up is the Alan Beck Memorial Park. And this is, Sky Canyon's building this with the City of Las Vegas, and who will maintain it. It's going to be a memorial park named after our fallen metro officer. There's another park in Sky Canyon that will be designed and built in the future for Igor Soldo. This estimated completion for this park is the first quarter of 2020, and it'll include two soccer fields and a basketball court. So to wrap up, first, we have a lot of participation. Parks and Recreation is probably one of the key touchpoints. It is the key touchpoint for our residents. And this is how we build community and make life better. It takes a team, and I'm very excited to be your new director, but all these parks and facilities really come down to people. It's seniors, it's adults, it's youth. It's how we serve them, it's how we come together as a community, and we put together this video to show you just how that all happens.
We love what we're doing, or we wouldn't be doing it. It's very rewarding to you.
And most important, it keeps you fit, keeps you moving.
The cool thing for me being that I have been dealing with my injury for such a long time, I get to be kind of a mentor to some of the younger guys.
I really enjoy the sport. I'm just happy to be around a bunch of good people after my accident, get to move forward on with my life.
The competitive basketball program is a unique competitive basketball league because we've established some great relationships with different coaches around town.
You can just see the growth of them on a personal level, a lot of athletes that they are, but overall, it's grooming them to be men for the real world.
It's not only about basketball. We end up having a lifelong relationship with a lot of these kids.
Just in general, Doolittle is a great place for our kids to be.
We hold high standards to the kids. Just because we're a recreation center doesn't mean that we're not quality. They have a real sense of pride in themselves, in their team, and in their community, and I think that that shows on the mat.
Kid Shine is a children's performing group. Every child that gets up on that stage that's brave enough to have a part that belongs to him or her, I'm going to let them shine. I want them to build confidence, and I want them to build pride in who they are. I love that I've been able to use this beautiful facility. It's been a real gift for me to be able to be a staple in so many children's lives and get to meet such wonderful people here in Las Vegas.
Pop-Up Parks and Recreation is a mobile recreation program that pops up in the city parks. We play games, activities, and crafts, depending on the weather. It's for all ages, abilities, and dogs on leashes.
Thank you. We're so delighted you're with us and just-
Thank you so much.
-excited to every day going forward, and whatever any of us can do, no matter where it is in the city, we're here for you, and we're delighted you're a part of us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions, comments here? And that was the widow of Officer Soldo in that picture with the great dirt throwers, and Gary Goett was in there, I think? Right. So it's beautiful.
Just a quick statement, we had a great lunch, and I, from my conversations with you and from just reviewing your background, we've seen we are very blessed to have you on our, on our council to work with us in our Parks and Rec. I think you bring some very innovative ideas and some things. I know that my team has spoken to you about that park, our little Pocket Charleston Heights Park, and you know, they came back and said that you are a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of ideas, and some things that make that into a world-class park, and it's something that is going to be an absolute beta for us as we move forward in reshaping the way that we view parks, I think, across the nation. So this is going to be great. One thing I didn't mention to you is, you put on your radar, is that we need a new roof at our park, at our pool down at Las Vegas Boulevard, right next to the senior center there. Just think about that, that we have a retractable roof that hasn't retracted in a long time, and it's-
Yes.
-extremely hot and humid-
Yes.
-in there, and we need to do something about that. So put that on your CIP list.
I did, I did see that on the tour, and it was brought to my attention, and I think that if we can get that fixed, it will improve participation in that pool as well.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda, item 31, discussion for possible action regarding a 16th amendment to option disposition development agreement, ODDA, between the City of Las Vegas City and Large Properties, Inc., Large, revising the acreage and adjusting the sales price and granting an extension of time through March 30th, 2020, for property located west of the southwest corner of West Lake Mead Boulevard and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Ward 5, Councilman Creer.
Hi.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of City Council. For the record, Bill Lawrence, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me this morning is Richard Gordon from Large Properties. This amendment is allowing us to move forward with a retail center at Las Vegas Enterprise Park in Ward 5. And as a segue from the last presentation, one of the ideas that we have and the vision for this area is to have quality open space and also recognize leaders in the West Las Vegas community. And so, Councilman Creer, I appreciate your leadership, and also the leadership of Commissioner Weekly. We are in discussions with Clark County of developing jointly a West Las Vegas Leaders' Park in Enterprise Park. This amendment before you here, therefore, is for two reasons. One is, it's allow us to build that open space, and I have a diagram to show you what we're thinking, but then also to give our partner a little bit more time on developing the retail center, and Richard can speak to that. So the amendment accomplishes the following. It reduces the sale price on a pro-rata per square foot basis, recognizing that one of the pieces of land, and I'm going to flip to the overhead here. If I could get, if I could get a tighter shot, they're essentially, this piece of land has been divided into pieces, and I'll move over to the overhead. So the, the existing McDonald's here for orientation, this is Lake Mead Boulevard, this is Martin Luther King Boulevard, the existing McDonald's on the corner. Our partner, Large, had developed the Apoyo Loco Restaurant, as well as the Dollar General Grocery Mart, and has currently under contract this piece of land, parcel A1, which is a little bit under an acre, and this piece of land, parcel B1, which is also under an acre, about closer to three quarters of an acre. And we're talking about this piece, parcel B1, pulling that, pardon me, pulling that out of our agreement with Large to develop the West Las Vegas Leaders' Park, and I have a diagram of what that might look like. And so this, this for, I think, on the overhead, you can see from an aerial, the resolution's not great, but you can see here the McDonald's, the existing restaurant, the Apoyo Loco. So this site would remain under contract with Large, and this piece would be pulled out, and the idea is to develop this as open space, green space, with a connection to Mount Moriah Drive. This is a schematic and conceptual diagram only, so the final design will likely look different, but it's just showing you how this piece in the middle of this retail center is difficult to develop and difficult to program for retail, and so we want to take advantage of having this as a city asset to develop open space.
Excuse me, isn't it a little premature until you know what's going in, in the property, where your fingers on the left are? Until that property is south there, the vacant property there-
This piece.
-and then the property on the other side, south of Mount Moriah? Until those properties, if they're housing, if they're warehousing, if they're, you know, apartments? Isn't it wise to wait to see what those properties, or are those all part of their ownership?
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent question. I think it's less a matter of what and more a matter of when. So the plan for Enterprise Park is a commercial business park, so we're not, by the covenants that we have recorded against the property, we're not allowing housing to come in.
Okay.
So this is meant to be a commercial business park with the, this, this corner here, taking advantage of the Lake Mead frontage and the Martin Luther King frontage being a retail center. So we're looking for more employers like the Dialysis Clinic on the south side of Mount Moriah Drive, employers like that to come into the area, but then we have this under contract with Large to develop a retail center and integrate it. And I think Richard can kind of speak to what they've built and then the types of tenants that they're looking to attract to the area.
And then who is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that park? And is it artificial turf, is there water commitments? Just looking at, and not to throw a bucket of water on this, but the reality is, it just, and the timeline, and its purpose. Are they going to feed from Apoyo Loco and McDonald's as they drive through the park and come to the park? What's the purpose of the park?
Mayor, through you, I'd like to turn over to Councilman Creer to kind of maybe touch on the vision for the park. This is a conceptual design only, the park has not been designed at all. It's a 0% design, so we're going to certainly look to the councilman for Ward 5, Councilman Creer, to get his direction on what he would like to see. The general vision is that it would serve the community, and it would also serve the retail tenants in the area as a gathering place.
But at our cost, and I see a gentleman to your left, sorry, Richard.
I'll turn it over to Mike. Mike?
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of City Council, Mike Jansen, Public Works. First off, Mayor, we've had some great conversations with Councilman Creer and Commissioner Weekly on a vision that was identified for creating what we are just tentatively, very tentatively calling the West Side Leaders' Park. And where this is coming about is the county has a program right now for a park bond, similar to what we did, and they're looking at where are those parks going to be placed throughout the county. And one of the options being discussed would be a framework where the county, through Commissioner Weekly, would provide funding for the design and construction of this facility through an inter-local agreement that we would bring back to council at a later date, and in return for that commitment of funding for design and construction, the city would be providing this parcel of land, and then it would also be a park that we brought into our system as part of the maintenance and operations of all our parks. So it would truly be a partnership, but I don't want to take any of the thunder. Councilman Creer is really behind the concept, and we had some great meetings just discussing on what's possible.
Yeah, we have. Thank you, Mayor, through you. We, one, Commissioner Weekly and I, Commissioner Weekly has some funds available to go, to go towards this, and we talked about creating some type of memorial for our leaders and our past leaders, that people can come and recognize the long and rich history of Ward 5, and those who have helped build the ward and helped build the city. And then we also talked, and then I kind of talked about the fact that it'd be great to have green space within the Enterprise Park. I think it adds to it, instead of just all hardscape. If you look at the Enterprise Park now, you've got the fire department, you've got Bolden Area Command, the FBI built in, and then you've, people go back and forth to the Starbucks and Apoyo Loco and the McDonald's, and there's no place for, on a nice, beautiful day, for someone to go out and grab a cup of coffee and go and congregate. I think it adds to what the Enterprise Park is, is all about. And so we are in the preliminary stages of it. We are figuring out what will work, what budget constraints are happening, but in order for us to get there, one way or the other, I think the green space concept is very valuable, and so we're just working through it. But there are dollars from the county. This would be a joint city, city-county-
And that's wonderful.
Partnership, yeah, yeah. It's, 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 it's cool, and it could be something that's going to be very, very special.
Well, I mean, knowing our parks that we've built in the past, a couple of which have been repurposed again because they weren't the right park in the right place, and just knowing this is what makes me feel very comfortable, is it's something that is in an ongoing discussion.
Yes.
And that, and that it's not surrounded by residential, which, that's where you get the people that want to use the park, not the quick drive-through, get a bite and get back to work part.
Yeah, and you know, and also the, it would be, you know, we're talking about limited in terms of, you know, it'd be closed off, and you know, it's really, really a park that's going to be utilized for businesses throughout the course of, you know, the course of the day, for Sinis, like I said, the FBI building, and there's no place right now. You know, we get a lot of people that go back and forth, but if you walked from, let's say, the, from the, from the beauty school up to Starbucks to the cup of coffee, there's really no place to kind of congregate, and I think this would bring a lot of us, a lot of people together, keep them on the campus. So it could be, it's going to be very, very nice.
I think the joint effort by the county and the city-
Yes.
-is terrific.
Yes.
And that you found a source of funding, but then to keep looking at it, what is it so it can be used year-round-
Yes.
...and become a collecting point for people and a meeting place and everything? So park may be part of it, and maybe not all, but you'll go through that as you continue to go through the process.
Yeah. You know, it, it's good. We need some-
Go ahead.
We need some greens, you know, all hardscape around is fine, but it, it, it needs sort of that little softening up, and I think that, you know, the former president of University of Adirino used to have a statement about sticky campus and keeping people on campus and keeping them there, because combustion happens. Milk Glick was his name, and, you know, if we can keep people, I think, around Enterprise Park, then combustion happens, right? Maybe someone from Sinis talks to someone from the beauty school, and they say, hey, you know, I never thought about that, or what are you guys doing, and what's happening? And Trina from Gritz talks to somebody from, you know, the FBI building, from Bolden, and there's a better community that happened. So I think we need that green space, and we at least identify the way to potentially go out and get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. And we're going to be keeping you in full communication on the plans as they unfold. So as a reminder, we're, we are purving to amend this piece and essentially pull it out as a placeholder, but you'll have full budget and design control, and certainly through the councilmen. So we look forward to bringing any of those plans as they develop.
And Mayor, I just want to, I would be remiss, I apologize, Mr. Gordon. I want to thank you and your team at Lord for working with us in order to make this happen, and also for all the hard work that you've put into our Enterprise Park and helping develop and going out and trying to find us the right, you know, tenants to come in there. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you being here today as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much.
And so, Mayor, just to, and Councilman- And so Mayor, just to, and Councilman, just to close on the business points, so we would be amending the purchase price from the current purchase price of $665,088 to a new purchase price of $385,751. That is the same per square foot basis that we originally agreed to with Large, so we're essentially selling the land at the same price per square foot. And then Large will continue to market the property for new retail tenants. They're, they're always in active negotiations with potential operators, so Richard's here to talk about that. The requirement will be to close on that Parcel A1 piece, which was on the piece that fronted Lake Mead Boulevard no later than March 30 of 2020, or next year. And so I, Richard can address kind of the site plan, and then also I think how this park space and open space, from his perspective, as a developer trying to attract tenants, what that means to building out a quality center. So Richard?
Thank you, Bill. Madam Mayor, members of the council, very nice to see you again. Thank you for having me. We had a very difficult time programming the second piece, the second parcel, and so I appreciate the city and their concepts in terms of the park. That certainly helps us change the site plan, as you can see. The concept now is not a fast food pad, there's plenty of that. The concept we're looking for is more service-oriented, healthier food certainly is highest on the list. Salon, nail and hair, sandwich shops, for example, independent coffee, these are the things we're looking for. Of course, the site plan may change a number of times, but that's the general concept. And I think it'll be much easier to market it this way because there's not the separation of the two parcels. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or perhaps a Councilman?
Well, it sounds wonderful, and it sounds like it's got a great future to it, the concept, everything you do. We're so grateful to your family's involvement in improving our city and quality of life for us all.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for coming here. And any comments, questions? Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make, well, this is just, nope, it is, here it is, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 31.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very nice to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay, Agenda Item, whoops, 32. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of a Staff Member and a Member of the Community who Serves City of Las Vegas Representatives on a Working Group Being Established to Address Issues Related to Homelessness as Required by AB 73 Passed During the 80th, 2019 Legislative Session from the Following Staff Nominee Shawnee Coleman, Kathy Thomas Gibson, Jerry Walker, and the Community Member Nominee Deacon Thomas A. Roberts. The final group shall be comprised of eight to 12 members and coordination with each of other participating jurisdictions. They'll include at least one staff member per jurisdiction, a minimum of two and up to a maximum of six appointees from within the community focused on the homeless issues. And so I think this is just a, which has been discussed, and the motion, I think, that we all concur on is that Shawnee Coleman, and there'll be presentations, of course, by staff, Kathy Thomas Gibson, Jerry Walker, and Deacon Tom has graciously accepted to serve as the community member nominee. But this is a new committee, and everybody really has such heavy schedules right now to continue to serve for the city and the capacities for which they have retained, and Shawnee has done a wonderful job up at the legislature for us. She's a law school graduate and just outstanding member, and certainly has a great purview of everything that's going on in the city. So I'm gonna make the motion to go ahead and recommend that Shawnee Coleman, and she has accepted graciously to serve. Is that correct? If you can just shake yes, Mr. Adams. And of course, staff recommends as well. And so let's have a formal motion. Let's do this very formally. We will have former Assemblywoman Mayor Protem Fiori, would you please make the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've learned that Shawnee worked so hard on this legislation during the legislative session, and I don't believe anyone on our staff is more knowledgeable on the bill that was passed. So with saying that, I'm going to motion that Shawnee and as well as the Deacon Tom Roberts Act as the layperson, Shawnee Coleman for the staff position and Deacon Thomas A. Roberts for the layperson. And that's my motion, Madam Mayor.
And so please vote and please post. Congratulations, Ms. Coleman. Would you like to come up to the microphone and just say your name, and that you have accepted that which you, for which you have just been nominated and approved?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, Shawnee Coleman, Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs. As was mentioned, I did work very hard on this, spent a lot of time on this bill at the legislature, so I'm happy to represent, to continue to represent the city as we move forward with our other jurisdictions and trying to figure out a plan to address homelessness on a regional level.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilman Creer.
I just want to wish you all the best of luck, and I'm gonna pray for you.
This is a team effort. I'm, I'm representing, but everybody will, everybody will be there. Our lovely Kathy Thomas Gibson, who has all the, all the expertise and does this on a daily basis, and our city manager, Scott Adams. So it's a team effort. I'll be out front, but everybody will be participating.
Well, you know, and I have to add, there are always so many new committees, and what happens, every time there's a new committee, they don't realize they're pulling people away from very significant work. You're so involved in the creation of the revitalized and building Medical District. So every time you're going to these meetings, that we've been involved with in concentrating on homelessness so carefully over these past three, four years, but even longer, we go back 20 years on this. It does take time, but because you are at the tip of the mountain here and know who's doing what, you can call on anyone to make a presentation as appropriate to the committee to bring them up to speed, rather than taking Jerry Walker, who's the head of our MORE program that's out in the field, out in the camps with the homeless, to bring his expertise. But he is left, because of your expertise, doing the job that he has retained to do, do for the whole city. So we thank you so much, and you are that overview which brings something brand-new to this brand-new committee, and hopefully you can keep the rubber band around the committee, not that it just keeps going out making more committees and more committees and taking away from the work that we have to do. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. And Councilman Creer's prayers will stay with you. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item 34, 'cause 33 has been abayed to the 18th of September. Okay, and remember, the 18th of September, we started, is that the one we started 10:00? Don't come at 9:00. 10:00. Okay, so Agenda Item 34, Bill Number Z 2019-1. City Attorney, will you please read the bill?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Bill Number Z 2019-1, In Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Las Vegas by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Parcels of Land to Reflect and Formalize Rezoning Applications Previously Approved by the City Council and Provide for Other Related Matters.
Mayor Protem, how about making the motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Item Agenda 34.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 35, 36. Items Number 35, 36, Bills Number 2018-28, 2018-29 will be heard at Recommending Committee Monday, September 16, 2019. City Attorney, would you please read the new bills?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill Number 2019-28, In Ordinance to Extend the Boundaries of the City to Particularly Describe the Land to Be Annexed to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Law's Obligations and Benefits to the City and to Provide for Other Related Matters, and relates to Annex 76674. Bill Number 2019-29, In Ordinance Relating to the Non-Moving Parking Violations, Amending the Schedule of Fines and Penalties in LVMC 11.10.140, to Increase Fine and Penalty Amounts in Various Categories, Amending Various Provisions of LVMC Titles 10 and 11, to Provide Clarifying and Parallel Amendments to and Updating Terminology and Procedures Relating to City's Use of Vehicle Immobilization Devices and Providing for Other Related Matters.
Thank you very much. New Bills 2019-28, 2019-29 are assigned to the September 16, 2019 Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony, Councilman Knutson, and Councilwoman Mayor Protem Fiori. If any so designated are unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. Thank you very much. And we will, okay, the next morning, the morning session meeting will be in rest, well, we've got four minutes. So, because these are scheduled at a time specific, 11:00, and at this moment, it is 10:56. So what we will do is give us a break for five minutes. We will recess for five minutes.